I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education, Special Meeting, and Public Forum with Finance Committee, which will be immediately following to order of Tuesday, January 24. First item is the Public Forum on Superintendent of Schools' Proposed 2023-2024 Budget, and is limited to 30 minutes. Ms. Daly, if you could read our script, Audience-to-Visitor Script.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there was anyone from the public who would like to address the Board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the Participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing *9 on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be prompted with, "You are now unmuted." For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you very much. Just in case there is somebody who wants to address the Board here in the Boardroom, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Vice President Lockhart will raise a card, and at three minutes, he will then hold it up again and keep it raised. And please, at that point, wind down your remarks. For people who may be calling in, who might not, if you're calling in on a phone, you won't be able to see this wonderful little card today. But at two-and-a-half-minute mark, Mr. Lockhart will interrupt you briefly just to say you have 30 seconds left, and then at the three-minute mark, he'll say, "Please wrap up your comments." So first, is there anybody in the Boardroom that would like to address the Board on the Public Forum regarding the budget? Seeing none, is there anybody either online or on the phone?
There is one person in, as a participant, who is interested in speaking. Mr. Madison, you are unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Just briefly, I wanted to give my compliments to the Superintendent's Office and all his hard work and staff for the budget coming in at the number I understand it to be, which is 4.84%, I believe, which is substantially lower than the 6% rollover number that AICR is also the norm. And most importantly, relative to the inflation rate in the United States at large, so I was expecting a number much bigger. So I know it's a lot of work, and then my compliments to everyone involved so far. And I apologize if I'm not understanding the full budget process, but my understanding is this is what came from the Superintendent's Office, so that's why I'm directing my compliments directly to them. But in a country experiencing 80% or 90% inflation, to have the initial controls committed at 4.84%, I think is phenomenal work. And I just want to say thank you very much. And the only thing I'd be curious to hear in some of the discussions is, what specific things were used to bring it down from 6% to 4%? And the other one is, how is SEL going to be funded once the COVID money runs out? But ultimately, my compliments that the first cut of the budget is substantially lower than the rate of inflation. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And when we go to the Finance Committee, because there were some issues with Zoom when we had the first presentation of the budget, we'll be asking Dr. Hill to kind of recap his budget presentation the best that he can. Anyone else, Ms. Daly?
There are no other hands raised in the Online Forum.
Any objection to closing?
No.
Audience-to-visitor. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn the Public Forum?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, abstentions, motion carries. Eight, 7-0-0. We are adjourned.
All right. I'm calling the Finance Committee of the Windsor Board of Education to order. If we could please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence.
All right, did I catch your finger?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first Finance Committee meeting of this budget cycle. As we agreed to as a Board, it will be four consecutive Tuesdays. We cut out the Saturday component at the will of this particular Board. So hopefully, we can narrow that down to three, and we can get our work done in a very efficient manner on behalf of the citizens and taxpayers of the town of Windsor. With that being said, I'll recognize Ms. Daly first for Audience-to-Visitors, and then from there, I will recognize Dr. Hill to go with the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there was anyone from the public who would like to address the Board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the Participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing *9 on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be prompted with, "You are now unmuted." For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. For those that are in the Boardroom, at the 2:30, at the 2:32 mark, Mr. Fury will hold up a card, give you a 30-second warning, and then at three minutes, he will hold it up advising you to wrap up your comments. For anyone that's online, the same goes, with the exception of there will be a 30-second interruption of your speech, and then at three minutes, you will be asked to cease your comments or to wrap up your comments. With that being said, we'll start with online first. Is there anyone online wishing to be recognized?
At this time, there are no hands raised, and there are no comments in the Q&amp;A.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the Boardroom that wishes to be recognized at this time? Seeing and hearing none, without objection, I'm seeking to close Audience-to-Visitors, and there is any objection? All right, so ordered. At this time, we will go into the discussion of the 2023-2024 Budget. For the listening public, we did make this PowerPoint presentation last Tuesday at the Board Meeting, but we did have some technical difficulties, and the listening public had a difficult time hearing the meeting and hearing the presentation from the Superintendent. So what we are asking Superintendent is to, again, make that PowerPoint presentation, and then, once he makes that presentation, we will go into the Budget Book with the understanding that the Board has been prepared to get into deliberations. We are not expecting the Superintendent or his staff to parrot the book back to us and to give us more time to actually deliberate exactly what's being presented to us. Is there any objections on how we're going to proceed? I'm hearing none. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Windsor Public. I'm going to read through my presentation of the 2023-2024 Superintendent's Proposed Budget. Also, to let you know ahead of time that this presentation and all budgetary information will be on our website. So as we go through these meetings, information may be updated, but this presentation is on the district website. So start looking at our budgeting process. As per usual, I looked at moving, you know, the budget as far away from the teaching and learning process as possible, and we start there. And first would be our contractual obligations. And when I talk about our contractual obligations, I'm talking about all of our bargaining units, teachers, administrators, paraeducators, administrative professionals, nurses, and then finally, the custodial, maintenance, food service, and safety monitor organization. And that alone accounts for 2.44% or $1.8 million just to meet our contractual obligations for our bargaining units. Next, we look at areas that are always significant for the district, technology, physical plant, and special education. So our technology budget this year is .60% or $459,000 due to additional software, which most of this is, most of that would be cost increases in licensing and any particular software that we need to update and equipment needs. Again, I want to stress that this isn't covering all of our needs, but this is what we felt was most responsible to present in this initial budget. Physical plant services, utilities, and operational increases equal .58% or $442,000. Special education equals 1.56% or $1.1 million, and this is based on our out-of-district tuition deficit. And so I'd like to stress here, as I did last week, that our special education costs, they continue to rise. We have no control over the organizations and agencies that provide services for our out-of-district costs. So we are at the whim of these organizations. Their costs go up, our costs go up. So even though we try to budget, and we're presenting a number here in a percentage, we know that more than likely, this number will definitely not cover that total cost for the year. Employee benefits. This includes our health insurance at $418,000, dental insurance $36,000, life and disability insurance $8,000, our 401A at $54,000, FICA and MED is $75,000 for a total increase of .78% or $598,000. So all of these together equal what we call our total cost of doing business. So just to open the doors and run our schools, as we are currently today, to do this for the next fiscal year, which would be July 1st, that would include the contractual obligations at 2.44%, the physical plant services at .58%, technology budget at .60%, magnet school tuition at .26%, special education out-of-district tuition at 1.56%, and employee benefits at .78%. Means that's a budget increase from the 2022-2023 school year to six, it would be 6.22% or $4,759,050. So that was just the total cost of doing business to roll things over. But of course, we know, being responsible, we can't present that to the town, and we, at that time, started to look for cuts in ways to bring that number or that percentage down. Estimated revenue to the town, the ECS or Educational Cost Sharing, Health services, $58,403. Sped excess costs, $1.3 million. Sped tuition, $150,000, for a total of $13,056,066. You can refer to the Budget Book for a more complete listing of grants. In order to reduce that initial rollover number for the cost of doing business, we, the staffing reductions were 1.0, or 1 FTE at the high school for a social studies teacher, 1 FTE at the high school for a family consumer science teacher, 1 FTE for a Windsor High School science teacher. And we have, we're expecting to reduce or going to reduce two FTE teachers, but we have not determined at which site, so it's to be announced. So proposed 2023-2024 budget, total operating costs for '22-23 was $76,484,436. The dollar increase to the budget equals 4.84% or $3,699,575. Total operating costs for this proposed budget of 2023-2024 will be $80,184,011. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. With that being said, Mr. Panos and Mr. Fury, is there anything you wish to say on behalf of your caucus before we start this process?
No.
All right. Recognizing Dr. Hill.
And if you wish, if you wish to do just a brief overview of Page Number One with all, just brief, and then get right to the school sites, that is your prerogative as well. You just want to give a brief overview of what those pages are.
So I'd like to go right to the screen.
That's your pleasure, sir.
So at this time, I'll call Mr. Brubaker from the Boardroom and Mr. Mahalal from the Park School.
Good evening, sirs.
Good evening.
Hello.
All right, well, thank you so much for having us here today and for your support with the budget from last year and your continued support as we move into the next year. One of the goals that we had for our budget description was continued collaboration with our community partners. So I would like at this time to say thank you to the staff and families at Paquonic School. With the budget, we've been able to continue with our strength of professional learning communities with our teachers, looking at data. We just had our Martin Luther King Junior Assembly and a Chinese New Year Parade. PTO continues to support us with boosters. We're up to $10,000 raised so far with the fundraiser that they're doing. And coming up, we have our Watch Dogs Pancake Breakfast, so thank you so much for supporting that program and Read Across America.
Likewise, at OE, I appreciate all of your support. Just some general highlights of the year. Our Watch Dogs program as well is going splendidly. I think we have a watchdog almost every day. Ms. Kalinsky's husband has been there a couple times, so thank you for loaning him to us. SEL, I know that you're a strong supporter of SEL, and we put a lot of money into that. And that team is really working hard to support both of our staff and our students. So that is much needed, and I greatly appreciate it. The other thing that we have that I think is kind of unique in Windsor is a really strong system of supports for our academics in terms of interventionists, tutors. We just had a meeting today, and we take one student at a time. What does Daniel need? So we really get into each individual student at Oliver Ellsworth and what they need. So that money is much appreciated as well. Those are just some general highlights of the year.
Yeah, and as Terry was saying, we have the emphasis on SEL, and we've already shared some examples of that. The other focus was around job-embedded professional development, so making sure that we are taking advantage of our walkthroughs to have real-time feedback, leveraging our coaches, and having all the additional interventionists has really allowed us to hone in on the Tier Three while strengthening the Tier One and Tier Two instruction. In the Tier One, a lot of the focus has been around the IWEU, and that has grown into even teachers doing peer observation cycles, where they're able to observe one another, give feedback, and grow.
And then, so moving into next year, our major 2023-24 school year work. There is a list of bullets, but I think I really want to focus on our use of data. I appreciate Dr. Noha's guidance on that. She's really bringing us far with our use of data and how that guides instruction for each and every student. We really want to streamline how we use data for PLCs, for our professional development, to train our teachers, and then how we use that to teach our students better and better every day.
All right. Thank you very much. Members of the Board, open to any questions, comments, concerns in regards to the budget as presented for OE and Paquonic? Who would like to open their deliberations? Mr. Panos?
Just some information. The "I do, we do," could you tell us what that's about? You do, an embedded actionable feedback loops or whatever this is. Tier One, just what do you mean by the "I do"?
I'm sorry, Mr. Panos, it's difficult to hear you.
He's asking about the major 2023-2024, Point One. Do, we, do, we do, and you do. He wants some clarification on that.
Yeah, sure. So we had talked about that at our presentations when we talked about data at the beginning of the school year. And so that is around the structure for a lesson. While there are many different approaches, the one that is the most effective in 90% of the circumstances is where the teacher first takes the time with the "I", which is they're going to say, okay, I'm going to model for you how we're going to do this. Then there's the "we" in which you do it together, and the "you" is when you do it on your own. And so, yep.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Panos?
Yes. And the, the next several, your new work for '23-24, you have like data-focused PLCs focusing on what was taught, supporting and coaching staff through ongoing coaching cycles to enhance, well, let's just say, skip over the SEL, I suppose. Well, monitor, you can throw, put that one in too. Monitor academic and SEL data to make data-informed decisions, enhanced instructional strategies for deep engagement, continue to coordinate and allocate resources to ensure well-being. Well, maybe, maybe that's not so much of it. But what is different? What would be different about these bullets compared to what you're doing now?
Yeah, sure. So I'll hit on the first bullet. Terry, if you want to take the next one there. And so are you referring to the data focus?
Let's start with that.
Okay. So the data focus, it's ongoing, right? And so we're not working in business where there's cogs being put into a machine. So every year, even though you're doing similar practices, the needs of the students sitting right there in front of you are different at that time. Okay? So for the alignment piece of it, it's looking at, okay, here's how I taught the lesson. Here's what the kids did when they're working on the work in the classroom. Then when I assess it, that should be an alignment. So what you're testing should be aligned to what it is that you're teaching, and that the data from that assessment should match and show like what you know that the kids learned that day. So that's an ongoing, it's a cycle. So it changes just within the nature of the, of teaching and learning.
So I, so Mr. Panos, if I'm hearing you correctly, did you want a brief overview of all of the bullet points and major 2023-2024 from both of them? Or did his answers suffice?
Oh, that's, I don't need another answer.
Okay.
You know.
I could just add to the data answer a little bit, if I may.
If you could add some.
So this Friday is the first meeting of a small group of administrators that's going to meet first, and then that meeting will grow, but to align all of our pieces. So I think we've always looked at data and used data to guide instruction. I think what's going to be different next year is there's going to be a better alignment between the data and all of our other systems. So our data and how that guides our PLC, which is teacher meetings. Our data and how that PLC then will guide professional development for our teachers. And then that professional development will guide how the teachers teach the students for math and reading. So I think we're going to do a better job of aligning all of those components that we do in our schools with that guidance from Dr. Noha.
And we also have a new, the IREDDI is our new major assessment, whereas before it had been STAR. And so as you're triangulating the data, we have things we've had before, like ST Math Lexia. But IREDDI is different. Even though it does the same job, we're learning how to use that to best meet the student's needs as well. So there's a slight adjustment with that.
So this is like a natural progression in your learning of alignment or how to deliver these use of data.
Correct. It's an ongoing cycle.
Right. So we also learned last year over the year before, right? Okay, so, well, the rest of this, is that a similar sort of thing? Supporting and coaching staff through ongoing coaching cycles? Is that, it's just, so. And, and again, you have here for SEL, data, this is the same sort of thing.
Well, that also, we now have the DESA, which is, we had introduced it last year. The DESA Mini, which is part of looking at students' social-emotional competencies, so whether they're average, above average, or in need of help. And that's by a teacher filling out a short survey, sorry, short, like a questionnaire for each student. And then if there are students who are identified as having greater need, you can do the full DESA, which is really, this is, we only did one last year. This year, we've done more. And what it does at that point is it gives you specific strategies to use for a student who has specific needs. It's been, it's been really useful. And also, the DESA as a whole, it's helped us identify which classrooms might need additional support. So it's things that we did before, but now we have more precise data for that so that we can make better informed decisions.
So you build on it, you say, based upon what you learned last year? Is that, is that what you're saying here? When you say more precise data, is that because of the more detailed DESA?
The DESA's new. We just started using the DESA last year.
Okay. Yeah, last year, but you, but you're going to continue that?
Correct. And like I said, we did, we did one student the first year because it was the first time we're using it. We've done five, and so we're seeing how to better use it and be more efficient, quite frankly. So we're able to fine-tune, like, these are possible interventions that will work. It helps hone in our decisions.
Now, what is different about the next one? Let's say, enhanced instructional strategies for deep engagement. Again, is that, is that just a normal progression of things? I mean, what, what is, what is new? Or is that just a continuation? Is that what you do every year? Do you want to?
I think it's something that we've realized through our walkthrough data that is a need for our teachers. So we're honing in on that in terms of professional development and what our coaches are working with our teachers on, how to give more precise feedback from the teacher to the student.
Okay.
All set, Mr. Panos?
All right. That's good. Thank you.
Looking to my right, I see nothing. Looking back to my left, oh. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is this due to COVID that you're re-implementing all these things to try and get the children to have a better set, understanding, and move them ahead into the grades they need to be?
Yes. And thank you, Ms. Cantor, for saying that. And also, when we're having staff who are coming in or hired during COVID, some of them, it's their first teaching job. So they may have had their student learning in a virtual setting, had their first experience in virtual, and now they're in, you know, the real classroom. So it's also getting them up to speed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Willison?
All right. So it's a question for OE. I don't really mean to open up a can of worms either. But so one of your goals for the '22-23 school year, the last one, it says, "Enhance school climate with the continued emphasis on social and emotional well-being of staff and students with the focus on coordinating resources and services from the community for family, students, and the school, and provide services to the community." The part of that I kind of want to hone in on is just the social-emotional well-being of staff. So we were all here for the instance when we had the teacher come online for about the issue with the air quality and everything. So we were all here for that. My question, maybe this is to you, Mr. Hill, or Dr. Hill, sorry. I see here on the list of what ESER funds can be allocated for. I don't, I'm not fully sure what the status is of the building as well. Maybe you could let me know. But it says, "Inspecting, testing, maintenance, repair, replacement, and upgrade projects to improve the indoor air quality in school facilities, including mechanical and non-mechanical heating, ventilation, and air conditioner systems, filtering, purification, and other air cleaning fans, control systems in window and door repair and replacement." So I guess my question is, can we meet that school climate goal? And if it hasn't been met already, or is there any funds left? Or is there a way we can allocate any of these ESER funds to better work with that situation?
I'm going to call him, Ms. Bachelor, but we haven't allocated any funds for that. That would be under CIP, so that's from the town. And so, no, we haven't put any of our ESER funds that was left over towards this. Would you like to add anything?
Sure. So ESER I and part of ESER II was really for all of the air quality. ESER, other half of ESER II and ESER III were really to... half of ESSR 2 and ESSR 3 were really to help the students get back to the grade level they should be at after being home. We have everything with regards to OE with the air quality and the moisture issues we've been dealing with this year. We are still looking into that and balancing, and we have a project, a work plan for this summer. So the entire OE building will be shut down this entire summer, and they will be rebalancing everything, checking the current boiler, getting it to make sure it's... They have to almost, they have to not recreate it, but they have to get the boiler because it is oversized to size. So that's what they have been working on with contractors, and that's what we're going to be doing all summer. I just want to go back, though, when we did have the testing, there's more mold outside than there is at OE inside. So I know it's hard for some people to, you know, when you're looking at it, but that is what the test came back with. And this is a reputable company that the state of Connecticut uses for other school districts.
So the funds can be used on this? That's just kind of my overall question.
We have used funds.
All right, okay. All right. Thank you.
So I want to put that in the parking lot when we come on the major maintenance budget line item. I will be very vocal at that part of the budget. So I will park that right there until we get to it. So, and I recognize Mr. Fury.
Thank you. Chairman Lockhart, I don't want to call you Dr. Lockhart. She's gone to another district. There's a, I like the way this is laid out of what your goals were, and I also compared to last year's, what, last year's budget book quickly. I like the way it's laid out of what you're planning to do for the year. And obviously, that started with the budget book from last year, what you were planning to do. And I know needs change, staff change, circumstances change, views from above change. So there are a couple of things that aren't talked about in what you've done to date, and I'm kind of wondering whether or not you're going to be doing them as the year goes on. In looking at the goals for this year, the fourth bullet talks about continue to develop and enhance understanding and implementation of trauma-informed practices. Is that being done now? Or is it being done in, within an SEL framework? Or?
So it's, it's yes and yes. So it is being done within an SEL framework for sure. We have systems in place at the school that both, we have an SEL committee that meets and looks at the DESA data, looks at needs that the students have, and some of those then start to go into trauma-informed practices. We also, at the same time, have an MTSS process, which can sometimes overlap, that looks at both academic and behavioral needs for the students. The SEL group will look more about holistic, like the tier one, like classroom, whole-school sort of needs, because MTSS will look more at, sorry, the multi-tiered systems and supports. Sorry. We'll look at individual student needs and how we can best meet them. And again, that goes into trauma-informed practices. We also have the opportunity to bring us professional development for trauma-informed practices. I've been talking with Ms. Michelle Williams about that as well. And we have professional development monies for that as, in addition to that.
And the only thing I would add for OE is if you look at my, my goals as a principal, I also am working on building the capacity of more leaders within my building. So one way that I've done that is two staff members, my psychologist and social worker, went to a training on trauma-informed practices. And then at the last professional development, they presented to the rest of the staff. So there's also direct PD being done on that.
Thank you. And I remember myself going to something, I don't know if it was, I think it was at the high school that the district brought in about trauma-informed practices. And it was eye-opening. And, and we think, see what's happened, you know, this was, when I had seen that, it was before the pandemic.
Yeah.
And it talked about things to look for and, and things that, you know, almost a scorecard that you can have of a student and individual. Thank you. And the next item, when you're talking about MTSS, the sixth bullet, continue to expand and enhance tier-two instructional practices in reading and math. Is that, even though it's not listed as quote-unquote "done" or accomplished, is that something that you're currently working on for both schools?
Yeah. I mean, we just had a meeting today after school during our PLC on that. And I think Windsor does an outstanding job with MTSS in comparison to the two other districts that I've been in.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kowinski?
Okay. So this might be a question for you. I have a question on the actual budgeted numbers. Do we want to address that now for each school?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is appropriate time to do so.
Okay. Then I do have a handful of questions, and I don't know if the principals are going to be able to answer this, or if I should be directing it to Ms. Bachelot. Okay. So there's a couple of small questions I have. Like GIFTED for Paquonic and OE have been removed. So I was curious as to why, and if that's being budgeted elsewhere.
So we took that out of the budget, I want to say, five or six years ago. The gifted and talented at that level, just because they were just the little people. So that's not being budgeted there, but we started at our three, five schools.
Okay.
I would just add that we do add that money in for our language arts and our math funds in terms of buying materials that are above grade level and that sort of thing. We also have enough interventionists and tutors that they can do some enrichment work as well as remediation.
Perfect. Okay, great. Do you mind if I keep going?
You, you hit the floor.
So under labor, you've got the tutors. And I, looking back over the previous years, that number has substantially increased. And I'm, I don't want to just assume, but I would like clarification. Is that because of COVID and the fact that children are a little bit behind in math and reading? So we've hired these tutors to help out? And do we expect those numbers to decline in future years?
So those numbers have nothing to do with COVID. That was something a year or two before COVID hit, that the district, under instructional services, that there was a lot of need for math intervention at the pre-K 2 level. And that's why we added tutors specifically in those areas. And before COVID, we only had literacy interventionists at that level. We've always had the math at the three, five. So instead of adding actual teachers, FTEs, what we did back then, and what we continue to do, is add tutor support at that level. But with the ESSR funds, we actually have math interventionists
Yeah.
at those two schools through next year.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed that, you know, pre-COVID, the numbers were in around 100,000, a little more, and now we're upping it towards 300,000 and over. And then, under the humanities coach and STEM coach, we, there's one FTE for both, yet we have two different numbers, one under the general budgeted fund and one that's grant-funded. Is that because maybe we forgot to eliminate the number? If you look at OE specifically?
So the, they are, they're budgeted under the grants?
They're budgeted under both.
STEM coach and humanities coach is under the grants.
Okay.
For all, for all four schools, actually. And that's something we changed at the middle of last year, because all of those are actually through Title I funds. And once all of our, not all of our schools used to qualify for Title I, and now they do. So just for reporting sake, it's easy to compare apples to apples, obviously. So when, you know, instructional services have to report on Title I funds, we can report on actual, the coaches for STEM and humanities versus a teacher compared to a coach.
Right. But what I'm trying to tell you is you have it, you have 92,000, 97,000 budgeted under the general budget, as well as 99,000 budgeted under the grant. So.
I'm sorry, what page are we on?
On page four.
On page four, lower right-hand, lower right-hand quadrant?
And I'm just wondering if that's an error, and it should only be under one of those columns.
If you look on the humanities for Oliver Eldsworth, one is listed in these, 23 salary?
Oh, yes. Yep, 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 yep. So, yes, because we took those, yes.
Okay. And then just because you're there, if you go up to JFK, it's the same issue? Possibly. I know we're not on JFK, but if you wanted to just make that note right now, so
Yep.
we don't have to address it again.
It's on page number four, lowered right-hand, on the edge of the page. For OE, there's a duplicate for the humanities and STEM coach. And then if you go straight up for JFK, it's the same phenomenon right there.
I just want to make sure all the numbers tie together where they should.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it's really?
So it's only one.
Grant?
Should be the grant one, should be correct.
Not this.
So up until this year, it was.
Yes, there's only one budget FTE, but it's listed twice. That's what she's calling out.
There should be, and it's different numbers.
Well, because it's last year's number.
That's correct.
Yes. Yeah. So.
Good call out. Thank you. You still have the floor, ma'am?
I think I'm all set right now. So I will hand it off to anyone else who wants to ask some questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kowinski. Anyone else for this particular batch of principals? Seeing and hearing none, are we okay to go to the next batch of principals? Without objection, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate your support.
So we, while we have the next set being invited by Dr. Hill, we will get a new page, obviously, of all the edits that need to be made at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber, Mr. Mahalco. So at this time, I'll call Principal Lee and in place for Ms. Michino, Principal Michino will be AP Wood. So Clover and JFK.
Good evening to our principals.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share and update you on our wonderful schools. I think we both can say we are so proud of where we are right now. So being new to the district myself and working with Jen and Kim, two of the things that we focused on that we felt were really important this year were the culture and climate of our buildings and, of course, academics. Some of the things that we're extremely proud of as of January, the use of our PLC time, which are our structured time for our staff to look at data, analyze data, and collaborate together to work on defining and implementing research-based instructional strategies that will prove to be important in our classrooms to move our students forward. Using that data, along with our MTSS process, as Principal Mahalco talked about, the multi-tiered system of support, and those processes that we meet with our staff every week. I know at Clover, we've been able to include those teachers in those discussions about their students and dive deep into the data to support what those students exactly need, looking at that data a little deeper than just an overview, and looking at multiple data points, not just our universal screeners, looking at several data points, including our DESA, teachers' anecdotal notes, observations in the classroom, progress monitoring, and then to have enriched discussions about students on the individual level. Along with that is our SEL process. For us at Clover, we have SEL blocks in which every classroom has an instructional block for SEL. Using the DESA data and data that teachers gather during those SEL blocks, we're able to look to our SEL specialist to help us with some tier-two instruction, where we're pulling that DESA data so that our SEL specialist can work in small groups and to provide students with targeted instruction on behaviors that will help. Both of our schools participated in a restorative practice professional development about two weeks ago
Yep.
in order to help our staff become more versed in trauma-informed instruction and strategies. The follow-up to that will be, I know at Clover, we have a half-day coming up, and two of our teachers will turnkey additional strategies and support and follow-up with our PLC leaders, who will then go to additional professional development outside of the district in March, to then turn it back to the staff for another professional learning opportunity.
All set?
Yes. Okay. So I'll just add to what Principal Lee was speaking of. Again, it goes back to our, our goals and our focus this year, primarily looking really at, it starts with behavior, right? So we think about restorative practices, we think about how do we best help our students meet their independent goals of, of behavior and being able to be independent in terms of their own learning and their own accomplishments. And of course, that leads to achievement, you know? So one of the things we're thinking about in terms of academic achievement is growth. And growth starts with the two sides of our triangle, the behavior side and then our academic side. So again, our focus goes back to the SEL work that we've been doing. We have an SEL work that provides opportunities to work with the teachers in their classrooms. We do have SEL blocks each day in every classroom. And our SEL specialist is one of the people that goes in and they support the teachers, as well as providing them with strategies for their classroom, but also doing model lessons in the classrooms. In addition, as we talk about the academic side of the triangle, we're thinking about the MTSS process, which, again, Principal Lee mentioned. We have a very strong MTSS process going this year in terms of really looking at what students need, students that are in our tier-two and tier-three, and assessing every other week to every month about where they're at and doing updates about their progress with their teachers. Our teachers are in collaboration with the team. So we're often looking at the data, digging deep into what the teachers are doing to provide those strategies for our students. And again, working with our coaches to help that support, to help support teachers with those strategies. So, you know, with restorative practices, with our SEL work, with our, you know, academic growth, and through our MTSS process, we're hoping that we're meeting our goals for this year and will be into next year.
All right. Thank you very much. I will open it up to the board, and just like the last set of principals, it's open to the narrative as well as the, the numbers that are presented on page three and four. Who would like to lead off? I'll start with you, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for when you're testing the students, and then you go back and you review the data. Do you group the students together that are scoring or comprehension level is the same? Do you do that and to groups, move those students into groups, and then zero in and focus on what they need? That information that we receive in the scores is just one data point. We have to look at the whole child. So even though they might score at one area, we have to look at other things that they're showing. So even though their scores might be the same as the next person, what they need might be different because of what strategies they already have or other data points that they're showing, if that makes sense. Yes, it does. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Looking to my right. Looking back to my left. I'm going to look to my.
I did have a question.
I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson.
No, no, I just.
Recognizing you, Mr. Wilson.
I wasn't going to ask it, but I'll just say, because I, I luckily had the enrollment report in my little binder here. So I was going to ask just why was it, was there, in comparison to the other schools, so much, so little allocated to Clover? But then I pulled up their enrollment report, and it seems as if there's significantly less students at Clover compared to the other schools. So it would make sense. The numbers I have here for Clover is 284 students compared to JFK's 369, or Paquonic's 383, or Oliver Eldsworth's 446. So, question pretty much answered itself, but that's just in case anybody else wondered.
A statement or question for Dr. Hill?
It's a discussion point.
Okay. So would anybody like to discuss the point that Mr. Wilson has put on, on the table?
Can.
I'm recognizing Dr. Hill.
Oh, I just wanted to make a point for Paquonic, because Paquonic's never been that high. Paquonic, we transferred two full-day pre-K classes from OE last year to this year. So that's, that was just done this year. So Paquonic and Clover used to be very similar in enrollment sizes.
Satisfied with their response, sir?
Of course. Of course.
Right? Recognizing Ms. Kalinski.
Thank you. Ms. Fatchelder, I think these questions will probably be for you.
If you're correcting my points again, I was.
There might be a little bit.
You edit my documents.
You want to send it to me? I'll be happy to edit it. I'll put in all these fancy formulas. And previously, in Dr. Hill's notes, he had mentioned adding an assistant principal and eliminating the head teacher position. On page four, that is not accurately shown. Is that just because, again, it was just a little bit of an error and we actually need to move them? Or what's going on there?
Yeah, so page four, and this is where the grants kind of came into play too. So page four is what is currently in our schools.
Okay, is that what's going on? Are we going to have an updated one for 24, though?
We don't show it.
You don't?
We've never shown it, like I show it here.
Okay.
And mainly because, the reason we show it as actual is because we, all of our people are connected with the salaries. So we don't know that for next year yet.
Okay.
I can guesstimate, just take everyone today. But that's why we have always shown the actual for the current year.
Yeah.
But then when you go to page three, we lower.
Yeah, and is that still going to happen then too?
Yeah, I mean, so the difference in funding is around $10,000. And the difference in job responsibility is huge. So the role versus the funding, it really outweighs. It's a greater, you know, need for, especially for Tricia and to match all the other elementary schools.
I was going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but Clover's the only one who does not have an assistant principal at this time. Okay, yeah, that's needed.
I believe we look to change that, correct, Ms. Budge?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. It was listed, I mean, I can tell you which page number it's on, but it's there.
Yes, ma'am.
1D. No, I think that's it then. I just wanted to make sure that that was accurately presented.
Ma'am, Ms. Cantor?
I noticed that, thank you, I noticed that Clover has two SEL specialists and Clover has 284 students. Oh, actually, it's less. They have less students than JFK. And why would they have two SEL?
I would imagine because of the situations that they have within their building, but I would defer to Dr. Hill. And I'm going to turn over.
You're going to go all the way around. Let's go right down.
But I'm always going to recognize you, sir.
And this was before Ms. Principal Lee came on board, so this was last year also. So when we rolled out the SEL specialist, due to the fact that Clover did not have an assistant principal, and we found five excellent SEL specialists, and we did not want to have to let anyone go because it's for the benefit of the students. So, you know, Dr. Mallory and I, you know, thought about it, and Clover was the perfect site to have two because of the lack of another administrator. Plus, it is. It's been understaffed all last year and this year.
So that's why I gently said because of the current situation within the building. So that's why I phrased it that way.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see no hands on my side, so I'm going to go this way. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. And a couple of my questions have been answered, so I'm glad I didn't have to ask them. Just as I had asked for Paquonic and OE, there's some goals that are listed, and then you say what you've been working on to date. And it's not referenced, but the last bullet for this year, expand and enhance family engagement and participation in school and district-wide events to create lifelong learners with clear and cohesive support networks. I know a number of things are going on. I know the watchdogs have been established, and they've been there previously as well. If you both can talk a little bit about what's going on under that bullet, even though it's not reflected as something, as an accomplishment per se.
Sure. So along with what you had indicated with the watchdogs and working with our Family Resource Center, we have empowering girls and mentors who come in twice a month, who work with our FRC. We also are trying very hard. Our surprise for our students that we ordered arrived a little sooner at Clover than we expected. It arrived today. Our book vending machine has arrived. So working with our PTO and working with the Windsor Public Library, picking out books and working with the Kiwanis Club and making sure that our books will be replenished has been nice with our K kids. Also, Mega Education will be also supporting us as well through our Student of the Month. They will be coming in and working with us and helping with recognizing students who are showing exemplary SEL work and citizenship at Clover.
And we have similar at JFK, as Principal Lee said. We also work very, very closely with our Family Resource Center in order to do a lot of our programs, one of them being Student of the Month. She helps us to engage students each month, recognizing them for our Kennedy commitments. In addition, we have our tutoring program that we work through with our Family Resource Center as well as a program for mentoring. The watchdogs is big this year, obviously, and they are at the forefront for doing a lot of the things that we need done in the building. In addition, supporting families. I know our Family Resource Center is, you know, very supportive in reaching out to families that might be in need of additional resources. So when things are happening in the building that they need support with, she's the first person that contacts them, finds those resources within the community, and helps to align that for what they need. So it's a very close relationship with what they do and partnerships in terms of every event that we do, Veterans Day events. She was right there at the forefront, helping to support that. So we spend a lot of time talking.
And our PTO is absolutely amazing. If it's not a phone call or a quick Zoom meeting or a Google or a check-in, someone from our PTO, parents are in our building at least three, four times a week, and it's beautiful to have them in the building.
I know when Mr. Lockhart and I went.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I want to add in the school store. As you say that, our PTO supports that with our family and community resource facilitator. So each week, the classes come down, they have Eagle tickets, they purchase items from the school store. The kids love it, and our FRC is in charge of bringing that with our parents.
And I know when Mr. Lockhart and I had visited Clover before, last year, the connection with PTO and many of those same PTO parents were PTO parents at Paquonic or had students at both. So they're linked in the same as OE and JFK.
Some of the names that come up from OE come right to JFK and bring them right on board.
One of the other things that I think you addressed that you're working on it, but it kind of jumped out at me as a little bit of a concern in general that happens. And that is, you talk about attendance. And the importance, obviously, we know of students in the classroom versus either being late or not showing up. And it sounds like you've been working on that. Do you think your efforts through SEL or home visits or other things is working? Are we doing better with, I don't have a numbers of where we were beginning of the year and where we are now, but.
Our attendance committee meets on a weekly basis, and we target students and families who have a certain percentage that we might need to contact. So we start, of course, first with the teachers. If a student is absent two or two days, teacher is calling first. Then if we see it again at about five days, then either myself or Mrs. Mayorhead teacher reaches out. What can we do to support? Then we do a letter, and then we're at, we need to set up a home visit. One would be a good time for us to come out. And then working with our social worker and with our FRC, what resources do we need to help this family? Is it just a matter of, we need to get you an alarm clock to get to school on time or to get to the bus on time? Oh, you didn't realize you had the bus? Oh, you have a bus? You're within the time. There were some families who didn't realize they could take the bus. So just little things like that has really helped with some of our students and our families.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Panels?
The next bullet developed and provided additional time for staff to visit each other's classrooms with content area coaches to provide collegial feedback around enhanced instructional practices and small group instruction. How has that worked now? Can you tell us about that?
Sure. At Clover, the coaching cycles have worked really well because that is dedicated time with the coaches where teachers can get targeted instruction for themselves to help improve their practices. Unfortunately, with our sub-coverage concerns with getting bodies in the building, we haven't been able to have staff go visit other classrooms as much as possible. But when we do have professional development, like we did at Clover today, where we had one of our consultants in the building, we were a little short, but staff had to pick up and help so that the teachers could get that professional learning.
Okay. Thank you.
All set, Ms. Panels?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Any other discussion? Without objection, we can release these two principals.
Release these prisoners.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're still under oath.
Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you, Ms. Wood. At this time, I'll call Principal Jorgensen for Sage Park Middle School.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good to have you back again.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Leanna Jorgensen, Principal of Sage Park Middle School. So I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you what some of our goals have been, what we've ever accomplished so far, and where we plan to go in the future. This is my fifth year of being the principal of Sage Park Middle School, and I'm just starting to feel like I'm getting the handle of things. And so I'm extremely excited about some of the things that we've done so far. And so as we started to make our way into this school year, coming off of COVID and trying to identify areas that we really wanted to have a focus on, we decided to, one, move and work through SEL, socially-emotional practices intentionally. We also wanted to take a look at our CTE department, making sure that we provided our kids with as much exposure as possible and making sure that we were also aligned with the high school so that we can be a feeder and work in sync with our high school partner. We also, from having been through COVID, wanted to make sure that the academic programming that we have in our classes were vertically aligned. And so we didn't want to walk into classes where students were learning similar things in grade six and grade seven in language arts classes, so that requires some conversations from top to bottom. So I'm pleased to say that this year, we had added an advisory class period for about 20 minutes a day, every day, where there is consistency in teaching SEL practices across the board to all of our students in the building and every adult in the building participates. We also did take a close look at our CTE curriculum or lack thereof. And we are auditing currently, making sure that we align ourselves with the high school to then create and adjust curriculum that we do have. We are also in having our data talks, thank you, Dr. Abdalhadi, data talks with our language arts department, science department, and also our math department. We are getting a better feel for what our teachers know. We have had quite a few new teachers coming into our building. We've had some retirements. And so making sure that people understand what do you do with the data once you receive it? How do you then take that data and then use it instructionally to support our students? So next year, we are going to continue with auditing our math curriculum, making sure that what we put in front of our kids is not only at the procedural level, but more at the application level. We are going to continue with our SEL, looking at the data from the DESA and some other in-house tools that we've created to gather information from our students and also from our teachers to create specific goals for our building and also for students as well. And then continue with strengthening our language arts department, making sure that we audit that curriculum. Our language arts curriculum is one of our oldest curriculum, and so the fact that we've been through five years now, close to four years of it, it's time for us to take a look at it again. And while the standards haven't changed, but definitely modes of instruction, the students that we have in front of us and the needs that we have vary, and so we want to also take a close look at that. And so I just gave you a few highlights, and I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jorgensen. And I like that you are ready. I like that energy. The board? Ms. Case?
I have a couple of questions on the budget, so I'm sorry if they're going to, you know, go around. Can you help me understand about the reduction in the mathematics line item from $7,000 to $4,800?
So last year, we purchased non-consumable stuff, which we do not have to replace at this time. And so this year, I believe that we can make it through with this amount. However, this may change in a couple of years to come as we go through the tools that we need.
And then, can I go ahead?
The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. How about the alternative education line item?
So we usually, it was a small lump sum of money that we work through our Spark program, which is our most restrictive environment. We've then transferred that funds, and we've been taking it out of our own main budget. So $300 is there, but it's probably just to keep our line item. But for the most part, we are going to fund it through our general funds.
And if I can just add, so special ed, because we do things different, it's its own.
Right.
Site, so the majority of anything that the schools need for under special ed comes out of the special ed budget.
All right, thank you. And then can I understand how the interscholastic sports and intramurals, intramurals, I'm guessing that works, because I know there's another budget for interscholastic sports that's for the high school and the middle schools or Sage. So I'm just trying to understand what that line item is for, the $20,000.
So the athletics that you see for the site, that only covers Sage's coaches?
Okay.
All the other items that go along with all the scholastic program is at Sage and managed by the principal?
So that would be like your.
Like all the equipment, any transportation.
Your equipment is not in the larger equipment line item?
Right.
Okay. And then I just had one last question. There's a reduction in the math interventionist. Is that correct? On the bottom of page six.
Yes, I'm trying to remember.
Oh, yes, so that was, so you're going to see this throughout, really at the high school. That FTE is all over the place. So we're trying to embed it back into general fund. So Principal Jorgensen actually said, in lieu, so I can save my math interventionist and get it in my general fund, I will decrease a science teacher.
Yes.
Yeah, and increase the math.
She made me say it publicly, yes.
Thank you. Those are the only questions I had.
Thank you, Ms. Case. My left. Ms. Panels?
The, you have a few changes here in the math, in the positions, talking about the position of math. We're going up one in math and down one in science. Is this, does this reflect a number of enrollments in these or what? How?
We piloted a schedule where we increased the number of math teachers per grade level so that students can have math every single day. And so we needed to add another math teacher, whereas students are having science and social studies every other day. And so I needed less science teachers in order to accomplish that. And so it's, and that's the reduction in science, actually, because in eighth grade, I have two science teachers versus having four, four math teachers. It's just, it's a two-to-one difference because they meet on a AB rotation instead of every single day.
We have, in language arts, you have 10, and you have literacy. Literacy intervention. We have, in language arts, you have 10, and you have literacy, literacy interventionists, three, right? So that would, that's, I'm looking at that same little box at the bottom left. So that would, that'd mean you have 13 total that handle for two grades, seventh and eighth. You have general instruction in grade six. You have a total of 11, which would mean that that includes language arts, too, among those general instruction teachers, right? You have 11 for the, so, is that, well, I guess that the total is the same, right? I guess it's about the same then. I'm just trying to figure why you have so many on literacy as opposed to other things.
And I could do the math, and I'll probably get it back to you, but with the changing of...
No, it's, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
So the math interventionists are not the, excuse me, the literacy interventionists are not the language arts teachers. Those literacy interventionists are...
Okay, what is their focus?
...teachers.
It's support for the teachers, right?
Supports for the students.
Yes, right, right.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, it's support for the students, but it's for, it's for language or literacy, or what do you call it?
For the reading teachers.
Right, so...
Have them in all the schools.
If there's like comprehension issues or anything like that, is it pulled out?
Well, you have special ed for that, but the...
That's not necessarily true.
Well, I know.
I think that's true.
It's okay. Well, I mean, English...
They can be tier one with the understanding. They may need a little extra help. They don't rise to the level of tier two or tier three, but you know, the objective is to keep them at tier one, and that's why those interventionists are there. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Am I, if I'm wrong, someone please correct me.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Panels?
So why do we need you? We have him.
I look better. Easier on the eyes.
Okay. True. Now, could you tell us about, on the toward our goals, the middle group of the goals here? You have at the last, let's start with the last one, the last little bullet there, conducted department, PD and language arts. I guess this is a social, the interventionists we're talking about focused on strategies for teaching informational text and vocabulary. So this, maybe, you know, maybe you just give a brief idea of how is this vocabulary taught? How do you know that students have picked it up? But what is unique here in teaching?
PD for teachers, when we looked at our data for last school year, students struggled in the area of vocabulary and informational text.
So this is something that is, something that you found out over the last couple of years?
One of the last data points that we pulled from already coming into the '22, '23 school year. And so our literacy development plan is built around making sure that our teachers have really good strategies in executing and teaching informational texts and also vocabulary, making sure our kids know how to use context clues, to break down a vocabulary word in order to ascertain its meaning. And so PD was provided for teachers early on in the beginning of the school year to make sure that they were prepared when they entered a classroom to embed that into their instruction.
So that's what you do with the informational text and vocabulary? The vocabulary is, I'm just getting an idea of how you, how you, maybe I'm getting into too much detail here, maybe I could hear something else some other time about it. Just curious how this vocabulary is taught.
So that I'm clear, I think you just made an ask. I wish to be very clear about what your ask is, so could you clarify that for me, please?
Sure. I just want to know how you make sure that the students pick up more vocabulary? I mean, is it just testing? Have you evaluated this, this procedure and found it to be successful? And what is unique about it?
Dr. Hill, are you...
What is unique about the PD?
About, about, right, vocabulary building. Yes, how do you?
So this is a question for the next meeting, sir? Or is there something else?
It could be a brief summary, or we could include it some other time in a PD.
Are you, are you prepared to answer that right now?
You know...
I will defer to you, Dr.
I don't want to...
Vocabulary PD at the beginning of the year.
So right now, what our team, the coaching team, is doing is we're doing a professional book study around vocabulary instruction in order to increase our own knowledge of how it's taught. There's a lot of many different avenues that can be used to teach vocabulary. There are a lot of competing schools of thought around that. But what I did was I went to two of our consultants from University of Connecticut, one of whom is the head of the reading instruction department there, and I asked, what book would you recommend that we study as a professional group? We landed on an oldie but goodie. It's called Bringing Words to Life: Robust Vocabulary Instruction. It's a really well-known, well-regarded book, so our team is doing a book study around that and then formulating professional development around the techniques and methods that the authors, which are all researchers in the area of vocabulary instruction, these are techniques that they recommend. So we're learning as a group. I also have one of those, one of the people I mentioned who's a researcher. She's working as a consultant for us now in, at the middle school and the high school and is working directly with our reading teachers or those reading interventionists that were just, that came into question, the reading interventionists. So we're trying to approach this from a informed perspective. We're not just going to take guesses about what works. So the professional development that our coach at the middle school that she facilitated was based on the techniques in the book. The next step is going to be to formalize this in curriculum, which I'm not going to get into that tonight because it's about the budget, but we will be having a more formal plan that embeds these strategies and methods for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panels. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Any other discussion? I will recognize Mr. Fury and then Ms. Skolinski in that order.
Thank you. Again, back to goals that have been accomplished to date, the second bullet, implemented schoolwide community agreements for adults to foster positive school climate. Can you explain that?
When our school development team met at the beginning of the school year, we talked about what are some high-leverage things that we can do as a building consistently to engage our kids and make sure that we talked to our kids and we saw them for who they were. The teachers that were on the committee, we all came up with just some basic things that if done on a consistent basis can bring about some positive relationships. So some basic things such as SCL starters at the beginning of class, making sure that we link our kids, get to know who they are, how was your day, greeting kids at the door, calling kids by their names. And so these are practices by themselves. You should see them every day across all buildings, but we made a commitment as a building that we were going to hold each other responsible to do these things. And so you'll see it in their classrooms. It's in my Monday memo every single Monday morning. And I've also gone around and collected data, my administrative team and myself, just so people can have an idea of, as we walk through in the morning, here's what we see based, as it pertains to the community agreements that we said we were all going to do. And so it's been a really good push. One of the last ones include having objectives for SCL and also academics on the board posted every single day. So not only are we going to learn academics, but we're also going to watch how we respond in the environment that we are in and we engage each other. So that's been a pretty, that's been really good for us at Sage Park.
Great. Glad to see about the alignments between the high school and Sage Park. I think back to when Dr. Hill was, they called him vice principals back then, he and I were on a committee looking at the transitions and making sure that things were aligned so that when it wasn't a complete, there's a, there is a culture shock to some degree of going from Sage to the high school, but trying to ameliorate that the best we could. So I'm glad to see that is ongoing. Thank you. Ms. Skolinski?
Thank you. Okay, I have a very basic question. And it's something I should probably know, but for those who don't, who might be along with me, what, what is general instruction in grade six and why is it only grade six and not seven and eight?
Because you can teach grade six with an elementary certification at Sage Park Middle School. Grade seven and grade eight requires a 7-12 cert, and there's an older cert that's just simply a middle school. And so for the most part, they have a different certification level than the rest of the building.
Okay, so that's why it's then just classified under different...
Yeah, that's one of those things that was here when I was here, and I hate it. So if you guys want to change it, let me know, and I will change it because it'll be so much easier.
I'm like, what is this? Why don't I understand it?
Then even Mr. Panels' question would be, it's just, we can list everything easier.
I'd be up for changing it if that's something we can discuss. But thank you.
I'll look to my right just to make sure. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I noticed that your postage and mailing went up another $2,000, and I was just wondering if there's, if you could try and maybe do more things digitally or send it home with the kids. I know postage has gone up. Did I, did I look at it incorrectly?
I'm sorry. I started laughing because every year we say this, that we want digital, and then everybody, who's Catcher in the Town?
They want paper. They want mail.
I need to be careful. Like, they say they want it, and they really don't. They want stuff because I think we should have almost no postage because everything's digital, but then people complain, I didn't see it. It's like seven weeks or something. It's crazy. People are just not letting go of something physical in the mail. That's why I'm like, it's handling, handling.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Ms. Case?
I'm sorry, I was going to add to that point, just have to add to that point as well, because the high school spends a lot on that as well and copying. So I mean, maybe it's time to look at an effort of, I can call it a green effort, you can call it a lean effort, you can call it a process improvement, but maybe we need to do a little education to our public to move away from that and create a way where they access the sites because even the state, I work for the state, we're off paper. So it's kind of crazy, in my opinion. So I know we're not in this budget because you have to plan for what is, but I think we should think about it. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with you. I think several years ago, I recommended the board go all green, and it was like, are you kidding me?
Are you kidding me?
So...
Hey, we don't have those books anymore sent to our house.
Well, like I said, if we're gonna...
But just for that, I want, I want the, I want, I want the monthly meeting sent in a packet.
All I'm saying is...
Don't give it to me.
I just wanted to make sure that I put it out there. I've suggested that when I was president, and everybody was like, no. So for us to expect it in the buildings and not practice that at the board level is extremely hypocritical.
We'll see who gets elected.
Right. Well, you know what?
I think it's too much green.
Thank you, Ms. Jorgensen. I think we're done with you.
Thank you.
So for the, so for the board...
No greens.
We stated that the end time would be, hard stop is nine o'clock. We are 7:34. We have the high school, CTE, and introductory pages. Do you want to take a 10-minute bathroom break and come back at, or do you want to power through? What is the pleasure of the board?
It is 7:34. We are, we are in recess until 7:45. If you are not back in your seat at 7:45, we are starting without you.
With these threats.
We are now back in session. It is 7:45.
No, you aren't. We'll have to bring them in. Where'd Jill go? She's out there talking.
Do we have Dr. Hill or his rep, or his designee? Dr. Haiti, do we have the principal of Windsor High School ready for us?
Looks like he's here.
The white week.
Good evening, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Parker, excuse me.
I mean, Bill can come and be a judge.
No, not at all.
No problem. No. Good evening, everyone. Don't, trust me, all the kids say the same thing. All the kids that come from the middle school, they say they feel right at home because I look like Mr. Fisher.
Soon to be Dr. Parker.
That's all right. So good evening. First and foremost, you know, I was thinking about just all the support that you guys get as a board, and I just wanted to say thank you for that, especially our building liaisons, Mr. Wallston and Ms. Taylor. I'd like to acknowledge them always there, anytime, and especially there for our kids. Also, I want to take the opportunity to kind of publicly thank our families and our faculty and especially our students for, you know, a pretty good first half of the year. So with that said, you know, kind of get into the Windsor High School report and then take some questions.
Yes, sir.
All right. So as you all know, Windsor High School, we are a comprehensive... All right. So as you all know, Windsor High School, we are a comprehensive suburban high school, diverse population, approximately 1,160 students currently. And, you know, we offer over 220 different courses, including 20-plus AP courses and then also moving into, you know, trying to look to get some more ECE courses on our, on our course load. And then obviously with the curriculum, our core curriculum, math, science, English, and social studies, we do offer a bunch of electives around the areas of technology, business, you know, along with our CTE program, the arts phenomenal program there. Some of the goals that we were looking to address this year, and obviously from last year, training wheels came off for me personally. But in terms of looking from last year to this year, some of the program designs we wanted to look at was really, you know, looking at our social emotional wellness and our connectedness. And when we talk about that, it's not just for our students, primarily our students, yes. But in thinking about overall school culture, we also want to include our, our faculty as well. And so what are some of the things that we, you know, we kind of look at that? So with some of that, we brought back our Wednesday meetings, which we kind of, we done that, we did that prior to COVID, then kind of got away from it, just kind of, let's give that time back to teachers. So while we still do give the time back to teachers to some degree, we also have, you know, kind of brought it back in the sense that now we can do some things around academics, but then also, you know, some opportunities to kind of talk about school culture. And what I mean by school culture is not just, you know, fixated on students only, but then also, you know, how can we support the culture around the building in terms of our faculty as well? Also wanted to make sure, you know, we have a strategic plan for ongoing professional development. I don't think that'll ever change, especially when we're talking about tier one and tier two instruction. I think as you've kind of heard across the board, those things will always be there. And I think we'll look to have some of that every year. We also want to look to, you know, be more intentional around our, our academic supports, around disparaging equity disparities for our subgroups and just really kind of looking at that, especially around the areas of SAT. And then as always, we want to recruit and hire and develop just strong teachers, strong leaders, and support staff around our goals initiatives. And so with some of that, what we look for, you know, in next year's work is, again, we really want to make sure we're honing in on that social emotional wellness. I think we've taken some steps in that direction with the implementation of our, our student support program. And that was kind of our step away from in-school suspension and really just utilizing those folks to provide more teaching and really just put the teaching back in as opposed to the discipline. I think that was, it was spent, we spent more time on discipline as opposed to actually teaching some of those skills. So from before, a lot of those folks that we had in that space, you know, it was kind of more like triage last year, I think it was. This year, we were able to be more intentional and now they're doing workshops. And then the extension of that would be not only to now support these students in these small groups and individually, so how do we actually go into the classroom and support our teachers with some of those strategies and skills to support the students after that point? We also want to look at, you know, maintaining the data culture. And I want to, and what I mean by that is, you know, I think we were, you know, as we learned from COVID and then, you know, I don't like giving a whole lot of credence to COVID at this point. Just kind of ready to move on for that, but there were some lessons learned. And I think what we need to do and still some work that we need to kind of establish is more of that data culture and not only just, you know, academic data. So some, we've now begun to start talking about some of the behavioral data and what do those things look like and really just having open conversations during those Wednesday meetings and department meetings with the faculty. And again, recruit, hire, develop, and retain exemplary leaders, teachers, and support staff. And then, you know, hopefully what you'll see in the proposed budget is aligned with our building goals and the district goals around culture and academics. And a lot of times we talk about academics and culture when we talk about those initiatives. But, you know, for Windsor High School, I made an emphasis on really establishing the baseline of the culture being, you know, the, the forefront and then actually academics and all those other pieces kind of come along with it. Hopefully you'll see that, you know, some of the faculty pieces and movements were just really an opportunity for us to be fiscally responsible and just anticipating, you know, some inflation in, in, just in general, just in our society. I'll take your questions.
All right. So I want to just say thank you. Since you've shed at the interim title, you've adjusted quite well and your leadership is definitely shining through with your new team in place. I think you're more comfortable in your skin now that you know it's your building, your leadership, and taking charge. So I just want to take a personal privilege and say thank you. I recognize that.
Thank you.
It's not easy, being the principal of our flagship school, because everybody looks at you. Everybody's pouring into your building and it's your responsibility to get them across the finish line. So you and your staff, along with everybody else, just keep up the good work. It's not easy work, but I believe everybody on this board truly appreciates what you are trying to do and you will continue to do with you and your staff.
Thank you.
That being said, we will open up the questions. I'll start with you, Ms. Klace.
Thank you. I just had a question about one of the goals around the culturally responsive, I'm sorry, respond, I'm sorry, the goals of 2023, monitor and respond to emerging academic equity disparities in student subgroups. Where would you, where does that show in the budget? Like where does, where do you map those interventions to in the budget?
In the, in the budget per se, I think we, we look at some of the SAT prep pieces. And we used to do, what was it, Princeton Review. That was the, the, you know, kind of the, the thing that we use for our curriculum and our instruction. And then what we found from there is like, for the most part, it was, it was a platform to kind of teach kids test-taking strategies, but it didn't necessarily address certain gaps. And even so, a lot of those students that, you know, primarily might perform pretty well anyway, just maybe looking for that extra little bolster support, they didn't even kind of, you know, take advantage of all the different times that we offered it. So it was a huge budget item. And then what we found is like, even outside of that time, like outside of regular school day, you couldn't force kids to be there. So we were spending this huge amount of money. But then what we found is that we're still getting that same data from, you know, the college board, the SAT report. So we could really hone in on those, on those demographic students and those subgroups and do some work during the school day or use it flexibly and then pay our own teachers that know where the students are or not and be able to kind of do some things there.
Great. Can I ask my other question?
You have the floor, ma'am.
All right, thank you. So the ROTC budget, and I'm not saying anything about the ROTC program because I love it and my daughter went through it.
I didn't hear the first part, though.
ROTC?
ROTC, okay.
That seems to have the largest percentage increase over the last couple of years. So can you, can I just understand how, why that is?
Yeah, so it was really just a commitment to, to that department. You know, they take a huge hit in terms of, you know, just enrollment. And to be honest, like we've been hovering around anywhere between 60 to 69 students, when in all actuality we should be around 100, 100 students. And so it's really just a commitment to, you know, do more marketing, do more field trips and traveling and things like that to where you can hopefully bolster some of those numbers. Because technically at a certain point, if you don't have 100 students, you know, they could kind of come in and do sanctions and things like that, which we don't want to get into. They're pretty, pretty good about supporting and working with us. But that was the reason, just to really try to fortify that program a little more.
Thank you. And then I had a question about the co-curricular activities. So is the bulk of that, that line item graduation? Yes. Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to look to my left. Ms. Skelinski?
To pay back off of what Ms. Klace had asked, you were discussing the SAT prep and how we weren't utilizing it. Is that why those funds have been decreased for this upcoming budgeted year?
Yeah, I'd say more, more repurposed. And again, it's an opportunity to, to use it differently. But again, that, that training that went, that was like, literally, that was like $10,000 there. And again, so what they did was they, we would have like, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Maines, but it was probably eight, initially we started with about eight different sessions. And then what we found was not all the students were attending all the sessions or they might only attend a couple. So we weren't really getting the bang, you know, that they, we were looking for. And again, like we were spending that amount and the reality is, is we haven't broken 1,000 as a, as a building since, I think it was 2016. And so, you know, repurpose that money, do some more intervention type things and then, you know, hopefully do something there. But to spend that amount of money and not really get the return that we're looking for, it was just kind of, you know, and then obviously looking at, you know, data and having conversations around what supports we could, you know, kind of support, then, you know, that was kind of the thinking there, to repurpose that money somewhere else.
So the, the line item literally directly below it, the advanced placement prep, it was, it's substantially increased over, for this upcoming year? Did you repurpose any of those SAT funds?
So some of that, some of that did go, yes.
Okay. And then what, what else does it entail exactly?
For advanced placement prep? So again, that's another opportunity for not only, you know, staff to be paid to support students, but then there's also, I mean, just the test alone, that's a, that's a large amount of money just in terms of paying for students to take the exam.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, it's just a quick question. So we lost a social studies position and a science position at Windsor High. I was just wondering if those were vacant positions or are those teachers repurposed or were they just let go?
So part of it, and I might need Ms. Ms. Batchelder to kind of back me up on this piece, but some of it was that when we had our department chairs, they actually taught, taught courses. So a part of that is kind of the fact that we don't use those anymore. We have the supervisor model for STEM and Humanities. That was an available piece of FTE that was still remaining. And then as far as the, the, what was the, you said, social studies and what was the other one?
Yeah.
So the social studies, just to, because this page of the budget was trying to make sure all the FTEs were accurate. So what we did at the high school was, because we eliminated department chairs this school year, they taught .4 times. So if you took the four department chairs, so for social studies, if, if we did not put anything back into it, it would have been a 14 FTE because .4 went away because we eliminated the whole department chair. It was .4, .6, .6 administrator. But then because we eliminated department chairs, it was a good opportunity to now look at our ESAR-funded positions that we currently have and then backfill into that. So, um, so when you see the FTEs with the .4, that's what that equates to. And then in order to show a true reduction, to just make it easier, I added the social studies and the science as a, a 1.0 reduction at the end to, just so it would be more separated out.
All right, thank you.
All set, Ms. Wilson? Look to my left. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, it's been in the, in the budget for a while, but can you explain the after-school homework program, how it works? Whether you think it's been being successful? How many students take advantage of it?
To answer that question, that, that had been around to my understanding even prior to my time. That was, that was a result of the Alliance designation. And in response to that, one of the recommendations was to implement that piece. It does still get utilized. I think this year we've been a little more structured in how we do it as opposed to students just dropping in. We have them sign up. And so we can also have them sign up on their own, but then we also can, you know, kind of quote unquote prescribe students that we feel need to, to go to these spaces. And we've identified who the teachers are, what spaces they'll be. So it still exists, but it just kind of looks a little different and more intentional.
Thank you. And in the goal area, you talk about the Saturday programming. Can you describe that, how that works?
Yep. So we started that, I want to say it was in October. It was, it was pretty new in terms of, you know, my, my time here. And the idea there was, you know, try to, try to support students outside of the regular school day. You know, you could use it, it's very flexible. So not only do we use it for, you know, if we want to use it for students that are tardy, we can use it for students that are tardy. We can also use it for opportunities for community service. But the reality was is we had teachers and, you know, we have students, especially students that kind of reoccur with some of the, the challenges and behaviors of a regular school day. It was another opportunity to kind of bring them in on a different day and work with them more closely as opposed to during the school day. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, is that, it's, so in some ways it's targeted?
Yes.
Is it really open to any, anyone?
At this point, no, but that is the plan, to be honest with you. So some of it, that's why we didn't want to give it like a specific, you know, tag. We just so-called it programming. So even within that, that programming, you know, Dr. Barry, that's actually over at the middle school, we utilize him pretty much bi-weekly. And some of that is around decision-making, but they're literally doing it on, on the foundation of, you know, chess. So it's not necessarily, you know, we're sitting down, you do this, do that. It's really now kind of, let's work on some strategies and give students another opportunity to kind of, you know, explore what some of the challenges are. But also I know myself, Dr. Mallory have, have talked about, you know, maybe bringing some inspirational speakers in and different things like that. So we really do, and I would actually just put something out to staff, I need creative programming. So I want to add more elements to it and really make it something that, you know, goes beyond discipline. As I think, you know, as actually as a former special education teacher, you know, if you give one discipline, you better have incentives, at least three incentives to go along with it. But again, another opportunity to get in front of some people. I mean, I'm there, you know, sometimes just to get, see people in a different light and really have real dialogue around why some of it, and even the kids, like you sit in those forums and see the kids give each other feedback, it's just another opportunity to kind of stand from school and do some of that connecting this and then hopefully do some learning.
And the last question I have has to do with CTE and probably also science. I know we had some issues with science teachers in the district. And we know with a lot of salaries going up in the private sector, we potentially lose teachers to the private sector or where they may not have to be in front of 100 kids every other day with block scheduling, not each day, but having 100 kids assigned to them. And again, it was on your goal for this year and also on your goal for next year regarding recruiting, hiring staff. And this is, I don't know how much this is a question for Dr. Hill and Ms. Batchelder and how much for you about building a culture in Windsor High so that people know, yes, Windsor High is a place where I'm supported and that's the, that's where I'd like to be a teacher. What, what efforts are, are going, especially in the CTE area and science areas? I don't know how much is.
So the CTE we're going to talk about next.
Right.
Maybe if we can just hold that question, if that's okay? Because I kind of, okay, thank you.
Look into the parking lot.
So for me, it's, it's kind of the, the science where we had some issues this past year. How do we, what magic wand do we have or to?
What, I'm, I need to be clear because you may be talking about something you know that I don't know. So what are you talking about issues? What do you mean?
No, I, I just know this past year, we've had some issues regarding hiring in certain areas. We know special ed has been an issue.
Oh, okay. Because I was saying, science is not an area where we are in need of bodies.
Okay.
At all. Not at all.
That's good to know. Thank you. That's it. All set? Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll start with Ms. Cantor first.
Thank you. I know on your goal number four, you have increase in science state testing performance, 59% or level three or more on the NGSS state assessment. How are you going to keep at that goal? What are your plans on that or increase it? I'm sorry, it's right in the middle of the page. It's a.
No, 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 I, I know what you're talking about. And actually, I know we would want to move beyond that goal. But actually, if you don't mind, Dr. Haiti, to kind of expand on that, that piece.
So I think one of the data points that we're very proud of is that, you know, we, in science at the high school, we were above the state average on NGSS. So we're very proud of that. And what we're doing is we're continuing to align our curriculum to NGSS to make sure that our students continue to perform the ways they have performed in the past and even better. I think as we go through the years, we are, we just finished our middle school science curriculum, aligning it with NGSS. So now we're getting students who have had NGSS experience, starting in middle school versus kids who took the test last year who did not have the NGSS experience in middle school. So we are, you know, we are going to be seeing an increase hopefully in our student performance as they go through all our new science curriculum that is NGSS online.
Thank you.
All set, Ms. Cantor?
Thank you.
Look to my right. Look to my left, Mr. Paddles? Mr. Pennals?
Well, there's one in here. We have, you had two of your goals. You have implemented faculty trainings and culturally responsible, responsive teaching and data talks. Then you have for the upcoming year, monitor and respond to emerging academic equity disparities in student subgroups. You, you touched on that, but now how do you do this? What specifically do you want?
You said what?
Walk through data and observations or things like that? What, what is involved in that?
Could you just go back, you said, how do you do it or?
Yes, how do you, yes. What do you do to monitor and respond to emerging, emerging? You say emerging academic, are there?
Okay.
Are there equity disparities emerging? Do you measure that?
No, so I, I think I know where you're going. So like it, it actually goes back to some of those things that kind of reveal themselves with some of the assessments. And then as you kind of look at who's doing well based on whatever indicator, you can kind of identify who, who needs more supports. And then when you start thinking, I think we've done culturally responsive teaching. That was, you know, training that staff had gotten during the summer. And then, so now it's like, how do we get that to the entire building? That was around, you know, our humanities department that did that, some of that work. But now in thinking about the students in all the spaces, how do we kind of transition and make sure all teachers are able to get that same level of training and be able to support students? Now, some of that is going to reveal itself through the data talks. Some of that is going to reveal itself through doing the walkthroughs. So there's different, there's multiple data points that you could pull. But the idea is that once you pull those data points and you go back and look and you kind of look at students demographically, you can kind of identify where those, where those needs are.
Okay.
Mr. Pennals?
Yeah. You, you always talk about data talks to discuss content-specific areas of growth. What is that about? You know, so you have, that should be related to this, I suppose, what we're just saying. The, the third bullet down for the upcoming work. Maintain data culture that is informed and implements ongoing strategies. So you've continued your walkthroughs and reintroduced Wednesday meetings, which are non-evaluative and informative ways to collaborative, collaborate. We introduced our data talks to discuss content-specific areas of growth. So this is something that, which you did, and this is, now we're looking for, what is it that you're going to do here? You're going to discuss more?
So this, this is ongoing. So a lot, the data talks are new for this year. And some of the, the data culture that we're talking about is really just establishing a cycle for it. I think you kind of heard that some of the other schools talk about the cycle. And I don't know that we were there as the high school as part of like a, you know, a reliable cycle of looking at data and kind of turning around, having conversations. So those teachers in those data talks, they're literally taking these data points from these formative assessments and other assessments. And then they're actually going back and having conversations around how to go back in and either give student feedback or change their instruction. And that's going to be ongoing. So it's really more, so how do we maintain that going into next year? So those have begun, then how do we maintain that going into next year? And I think it involves a level of just kind of, you know, even looking back and reflecting and saying what worked this year and what didn't? What worked for certain content areas and what didn't? What were the results that actually came from our students from having these data talks? And then kind of carried it into next year. So it's still kind of going to be a work in progress, but maintain the cycle.
And as a specific area of growth, are you referring to a subject area? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That's what you mean there, like social studies, science?
Yes. So the idea is that the, whatever department it is, whatever content it is, at some point down the road, every department or content should be able to have that level of looking at data and supporting student feedback and instruction.
So is this something that may be tied back to maybe teacher evaluations informally?
Not so much, not so much the evaluation piece, but it, you know, could be over time. But again, this is more collaborative and coaching and those opportunities.
That's what I'm going.
Yeah, so the idea is to do that before you get to that point. And it's also an opportunity to know what to look for before you do get to that point. So it can be a win-win.
Mr. Pennals?
I think that's it, thank you.
Looking to my right? Nothing, looking to my left? Are we all set with the Windsor High School principal, soon to be Dr. Parker?
Working on a dissertation.
Well, you know what, we go, the power of the tongue, we going to speak this into existence.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
I appreciate you all, thank you.
You're pressing through, so we know it's going to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All set?
Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Next, I'll call up Dr. Haiti, Ms. Wicks, and A.P. Fanjulo to discuss the CTE department.
Good evening, good evening, and good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to start out by just briefly introducing. So CTE department is our career and technical education department at the high school. As Principal Parker pointed out, we have a comprehensive high school, meaning that our high school allows students not to just get graduation requirements to graduate, but also provides a lot of opportunities for our students to be involved in different career pathways. So the state of Connecticut has sixteen, there are sixteen national career clusters. However, the state of Connecticut recognizes twelve as most important for the state of Connecticut looking at the job market in Connecticut. And at Windsor High School, we have out of the twelve career clusters, we have ten of them represented where we have at least two or three courses under each career cluster. The entire idea of CTE is really to allow students to have a, you know, kind of a preview to what different careers look like, get experience, firsthand experience into what, you know, if, whether they choose to go to college or go on to the workforce after high school, it allows them these opportunities. We do provide students with a hands-on, critical thinking, problem-solving, you know, curriculum that, you know, that is, and, you know, Ms. Fanjulo is going to talk about our curriculum and our efforts to, you know, create standard-based curriculum. But we also provide students, and that's what we're trying to work on this year, is making sure that every career pathway allows students to either experience an internship or a certification in that career by the time they graduate so that we can help our students with their resume builder so that if they choose to go on and, you know, take on that career after high school, they do have the certification needed or the internship needed to get that job. And I will pass it over to Ms. Katrina Wicks, our director of IT.
Hi, so I'm going to review what the goals are and then what we've accomplished to date. And then Ms. Fanjulo will continue with, with the major work for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So the goals of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year are to ensure safety practices are in line to industry expectations and conduct a biannual audit of all shop classrooms using an outside consultant certified in OSHA guidelines. Number two, create an advisory board consisting of local businesses that align with cluster areas to increase teacher knowledge and student opportunities. And then number three, align each program with a competition, experience, college credit or certification that ensures students leave their pathway with enhancement to their resume. And to date, we've accomplished the following. We've conducted the in-house safety audit and we've updated the advisory board to include all three branches of CTE and seeking additional local businesses to partner with. And number three, we've developed and implemented standards-based curricula.
All right, so moving on, when we are thinking about what we were going to be looking for moving forward in the twenty-three and twenty-four school year, we kind of kept it simple. We only have two bullets here. And one of the reasons why we tried to keep it simple is that we have had some turnover, as was alluded to earlier, with teachers. And we're feel, we feel that we have put together a really good team of people who are very invested, both at Windsor High School and the students as well as in the community. So we are really going to be focusing on building those strong community and strengthen those strong community involvements, which is, which is some of the work that we've already started to do. So that's the second bullet. And the first bullet that we talked about a little bit is develop and implement standard-based curricula. And I know that you saw that's, that's some of the stuff we have accomplished. But it did not move as quickly as we had hoped. I'm just coming into this role and kind of reviewing everything, as is Dr. Haiti. And can't do anything, talk about anything that was or was not done in previously, just kind of move ahead. And we have put together kind of a three-year plan to update. We do have standard-based curriculum in all the subject areas. It's just needs to be updated, you know, to kind of reflect the technology that's happening right now and to reflect our format and try to make everything consistent in CTE as it is in other curricular areas within the school. And I guess we'll take questions, the best that we can.
I'll open it up to the board. Any discussion?
The, the three, what are the three?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I'll start you, Mr. Pennals, and then Ms. Clace.
Just, what are the three branches of CTE?
Business?
You know, what are they? Updated the advisory board to include three?
Oh.
To include all three branches of CTE?
The business, the technology, and the family consumer science. So I think that in the past, the advisory board, and I just learned about this as well, get, being new to CTE, my background is, has not been in CTE. When we are, we're applying for funds, you know, through the Perkins Grant, you need to have one of these advisory councils. And it's pretty much business owners that we have partnered with within the community. And every year we kind of take a look at that and update it to see, you know, we have, for instance, we have a big partnership with Windsor Federal Bank. We have a banking, we have bank in the, in the, in the school that runs during third block. And that bank manager might change. That might not be the same person that we would work with. So that, that would be like updating. But we want to make sure that we include people from both the business community, the technological community, and the family and consumer science. And I think it was like leaning heavy on one end. So we're just trying to make sure that that's a little bit more equitable among the three branches.
When they do the internships, do, are they without pay?
Yes. And we're still, again, that's another thing we're working on strengthening. And that comes with, you know, with the turnover of staff, those relationships can be lost during certain times. So we're trying to like reestablish those relationships with certain businesses, try to get kids a little bit more in, whether it's even with some of the community colleges or we have so many businesses in town that just want to help and reach out. And it's just kind of, kind of reestablishing that and getting kids more into those, into those internships. And, and they can lead to a lot, and hopefully they will lead to a lot of paid jobs for the kids who want to go right into that career path, which is just something that we need to offer as a comprehensive high school, and we do, so.
Well, how, about how many businesses do, do we deal with, do you know? I would say a couple dozen?
That's a good question. We're working more with the Chamber of Commerce in town. But again, it's, right now, I think maybe. Yeah, I'm not quite sure because like, like I said, we've had turnover in staff, so relationships have gone to the wayside. So we're still trying to work, you know, with our counseling department too, pretty closely to kind of reestablish who those people are and whatnot. But in conjunction, yeah, you can, Dr. Hill can.
Let me add on, thank you. So we, over the last few months, excuse me, Ms. Morales and myself and Ms. Batsholder, we have been to a couple of functions with the Chamber of Commerce because as Ms. Fanjulo was saying, with, with all the turnover, we've had a ton of turnover. She keeps saying that because we have in CTE. We get someone, we think we got it, we're going to start moving, and then we've had to replace that person. So we finally have the complement of folks that we're going to have. Ms., Dr. Haiti and I met with them, the whole department, last week. You know, I want, I shared with them my expectations for that department and my belief in the department. And also that, that's, that's a goal of mine, is to grow that area. That's a very important area. So we know we have the business, the potential business partners out there in the community. And that is part of the role for Ms. Morales to connect our school counseling department along with those teachers in that department as well. So that is something that's not currently moving the way I would like it to move at this point. But we fully expect now having our complement of teachers, that that'll be something that'll be a point of pride for us. And as Ms. Fanjulo said, increase opportunities for our students.
Lots of meanings on the books.
Yeah.
All set, Mr. Pennals?
Very good, yes. I wonder if Johnson Controls has offered a job.
Do you know somebody there?
You could get this, a lot of money, yeah.
Absolutely.
You know anybody?
I think I know a person that knows a person.
Ms. Clace?
I know, I understand that you're building, so I think it's great. I just had a question around supplies, just for infrastructure. Did you, do you use that for like a database or what are those, what is that line item by? And do you need more things than you currently have? I just think when you're augmenting a program, it's difficult with such a small budget.
We always need more, we always need more things than we currently have. And we kind of, when we were developing this, shifted money around. It looks like it's exactly the same. But as we know, two of the major, major things that are increased are wood and food. So you can, what, so you can kind of see that, that supplies line item, to my understanding, and I'm still, within the CTE budget, there's like a lot, a lot, a lot of line items like within this. And I'm still matching things up in my own brain. And that will take me a little time since I'm new to this role. But from my understanding right now, that supplies is mostly classroom supplies, like not, not the wood, not the big things, the like, the little, the, the markers, the paper, the pen. Because that used to come from ones, in my understanding, Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, used to come from one central thing in the school and now it comes from department. So each department, I believe, has a line item for that stuff.
And if I can add, this is a site budget. We do also have grant fund through Perkins that supports a lot of other stuff that we do with CTE. So this is only reflecting the site budget.
Anyone else? Mr. Fury?
Thank you. Vocational agriculture, are we still with Glastonbury? Is that our connection?
We are.
And how many students this current year are in that program?
One, full-time. Yep.
Is that, I mean, is, is there just not an interest or do we know what?
It's a good question. I don't know how many we've had before him either historically. I don't, it used to be half-day and they used to support a couple more. But it's, it's hard too for students because when you make that choice to do those programs, which we do offer, you give other things up. So, meaning like other clubs and activities, perhaps extra sports because of the timing. So I, that's just from my own personal perspective, but I don't.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
When we've gotten questions about it, it always goes back to, well, what can I still do at the school? And be, because we're transporting and by the time they get back at the high school, they're at the elementary.
Yeah, they're like at four o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And is, is it that there's, is it just the science classes that are, are there and they take all their other classes at Windsor High?
No, so when it's their full day, that one student is full day.
So I think they had a choice and that they could either do, there's two half, they could have a half-day option or a full-day option.
There's always been a half-day option.
Yeah.
Particular student because of COVID. They gave him the option when it was decided they could not do the half-program and come to the school. They had to be at the school.
Right.
So he's at Glastonbury High?
So Glastonbury.
Glastonbury offered that opportunity for them to go.
For that particular student, so, yeah, that makes sense to me.
They didn't offer half-day anymore after COVID. They made them go full day because of COVID and then never came back from it because.
So if somebody wants to be in it next year or in the next couple of years, we'll still offer it, but it's, it's a, it'll be a full day in Glastonbury?
As of right now, it's a full day. Every year, Dr. Hill has to re-sign up with, we, you know, we have, we have a MOU with Glastonbury that we sign a contract every year with. But that was one of the stipulations. And we did kind of kick it back saying, it's not COVID anymore, but they're, they, they want a full day.
I just know I, I've gone to Bloomfield to see their program and it's quite remarkable.
We, we used to.
I don't know what, Suffield and Glastonbury have their own programs that, and I know we, we've historically been with the Glastonbury program, thank you. I know we had a firefighting course.
Yeah.
Have?
Have, have.
Added one of this past year. And, and is the pathway there, you talked about that usually it's two or three classes. Is there something envisioned, is there a firefighter two that's going to be offered next year or?
Yeah.
So we are, we are looking into the possibility of offering FIRE 102 because we offer FIRE 101 this year. And also looking at the possibility of making FIRE 101 a year-long course, not just a semester course. It has a lot of scheduling.
It has a lot of scheduling implication. It has a lot of, again, we do have a teacher on staff who is a teacher of record, but we also have to pay for outside professionals to come in on a daily basis to kind of co-teach the class. So we are looking into all three options as we speak, actually, as we prepare the schedule for next year.
Thank you.
Ben, fun.
That just made my heart just flutter.
I figured, again, partnership with the community right there.
I, I truly believe that should be a double block, because as soon as they're getting right into the floor of things, they got to repack the truck and come back to school, so they're really not getting the full impact. So that should be definitely, hopefully, a double block moving forth. But we'll see how that goes.
I, yeah. I had a student, I had a student tell me he got his pager today. He's like, I got my pager.
I, I understand, sir.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you for all the work you've guys been doing, especially with the advisory board. It just sounds like an amazing idea from the ideas that you guys have brought forth so far. I firmly believe in building community here in Windsor. And it sounds like that's exactly what you guys are doing, because this budget that we keep putting forward, I think it'd be the best, it'd be of our best interest to try to prepare the students we have in the schools right now to be able to pay for it, because we want to keep the kids in Windsor. We want to stop the migration from out of Windsor and out of Connecticut, so we can find a way to best partner with the businesses in town and then possibly even bring some ideas towards towns council to say, I don't know, like, I know they, they've done like tax breaks for Amazon and for, for various big companies that came in. So maybe if we get a certain percentage of Windsor High graduates as workers, and they're making decent salary, we can do something for them as well, because that's the kind of creative thinking we have to do to be able to keep building community here in Windsor, because these numbers are only going to keep going up. And we're going to have to have somebody who's be, who's able to pay for these, these budgets that we're putting forward. And if everyone's leaving, then we're not going to be able to do it. And not everybody wants to leave, but Connecticut is expensive for young folks. So thank you guys so much for everything you're doing.
I agree with you, Mr. Wilson. Licensed help is, is hard to come by. And hopefully, we can find a way to work with the Department of Consumer Protection to actually find a way that hours they spend here within our buildings and with their internships, that those hours can count towards being able to be qualified to sit for the test and become journeyman in their respective fields. I know I graduated with a degree, but I still needed 4,000 hours to just sit for my journeyman exam in Connecticut and in Massachusetts. And they didn't count both of them the same, so I had to get, it was weird. So Connecticut could be very difficult with their licensing. So I would love to see how we can find a way to have our young people from 16 to 21 to be able to find, get those hours and find a way to give them a minor with like business class or something, so they have a full understanding of not just being a blue-collar worker as a grunt, but actually have some business acumen with them, so that when they have a couple of years underneath their belt, now they can be seated for the contractor's test, which is the business law portion. That's where the business acumen and the finance come in. That's the path I would like to see these individuals. It's, there's no shame in being a blue-collar worker. You can be an electrician, you can be a plumber, making well over $150,000 a year if you're worth your weight in gold, because people are willing to pay for those services. So there's no shame in that. No shame at all. And then that's the message that we want to make sure that our kids hear. But more importantly, they need, they need to see contractors in front of them that are actually doing what we say they're doing. They may be struggling, they may be working hard, but they're providing for their family in a very, very responsible way. And it's taxes coming back to the state, taxes coming back to the town. So I would like to see what the, the tech ed schools are doing in the state and if they have any partnerships with the Department of Consumer Protection. Because at the end of the day, without your license, you don't work in Connecticut. And these towns are very strict about trades coming in their towns and working without pulling permits and being unlicensed and being uninsured. It's a huge liability to allow uninsured, unqualified people working in your town, working in your houses. You can work on your house all you want if you own the property. You don't need a license for it. But when you're doing something for someone else, got to make, we got to make sure that these, these, these young men and women are truly trained and prepared to go out there and sit for these exams. So that, that, that's something, I'm a licensed electrician, low voltage electrician by trade, so I can run cable, I can run networks, I can do all that stuff. That's good money in that type of work. And then if you know how to manage your money, you know how to program it, you know how to make it work, you know how to do this Wi-Fi stuff. Not a lot of people want to do that. You know why? Because it's work. And we live in an environment where people just don't want to work. And we just got to make sure that we build that structure within these young men, these young women. So I'm really, really engaged in this particular piece. I think this budget, in my opinion, is skimpy, very skimpy. I'm just going to be very, very vocal about that. And I, I want to make sure that we are thrusting within our tech ed department and showing these young men, these young women, that it's okay not to go to college. It's okay not to go to the military. It's okay to actually know how to do carpentry. It's okay to be an electrician. It's okay to be a plumber. It's actually okay. So that's, that's the vision, that's the energy I want to see from this department moving forth.
We'll come in more next year. Everyone heard that that was recorded. I'll be, good to know. I know where you live. Yeah.
I, I just, I just love your percent increase.
What's my percent increase?
Which is zero percent.
It won't be that next year, because I'll be more educated. I, I myself will be more educated. Not have to do this right away early.
What I said was, this is the superintendent's budget. If we have the ability, if we want to increase it, we have that ability to do so, or we have the ability to decrease it, so. I understand that, but I just want to share that with you.
Are we, any more questions? Thank you very much. The last piece is, for the board, is the introductory pages. So everyone can go to page one, and we'll work our way through these pages. Instead of going through each page one by one, is there a particular page you would like the superintendent to address? I will start to my left with Ms. Kalinsky. Is there any of the page ones?
Yes.
H?
Yes.
Recognizing Ms. Kalinsky for 1H.
Am I all set? Okay. So I was reviewing the budget from last year and saw that it was budgeted for Sage to do a culinary classroom upgrade. Do we just not get around to that, and that's why we're rebudgeting it again for this year?
Right. So we actually put it out to bid. We've been, we've been struggling actually getting, finding vendors that really do the work in such a tighter space than the high school. So we're still trying to find someone that can do what we actually want them to do.
Got it. Okay.
All set with all the page ones?
For me, yes.
I am going to go to my right, recognizing Ms. Clase. Any of the page ones that you would like to have Dr. Hill discuss? Any of the page ones? Thank you, ma'am. I will go to my left. Ms. Cantor?
I think I'm all set. Hold on. Everything's been answered.
All set? Thank you very much.
Very good.
Going to my right, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's, it's a dumb or a bad question.
Page do you want, sir?
1B.
Page 1B?
Yeah. Yeah, insight.
Mr. Wilson?
On the, the tuition line item from actual to the estimate we're doing, I just don't get why it decreased so much.
So this is, so this line item is tuition that we actually receive from other districts. Say if they're placed by DCF, but they're... Nexus is a different town, then we can bill them and they pay for those students. So that's a direct link to that. So it's such an up and down. Some years, we have $500,000 in there. But lately, it's been a lot lower. So I always like to go more on the conservative side, just because the town, if I tell them they're getting all this money and then they don't get it, that's not a fun conversation.
All set, sir? All right. Ms. Pennos? Any of the page ones would you like to speak about, sir?
Oh, page one, is this? No, I, I guess, no, I just had to, sometime I got a question, the increase in the special ed estimate, but that's not here.
All set, sir?
Thank you.
Mr. Fury?
I'm set.
All right. Is there anything before I close, before I close page one? Is there anything, Dr. Hill, you would like to say before I end discussion on page one?
No. I think, you know, we started tonight, I kind of laughed. You said it's skimpy already. I, I think what you'll see as we continue to look at the budget, what you worked today, we're, again, I was, we're responsible, trying to be responsible.
Understood.
We had a time where inflation is really just astronomical. And I'm actually seeing information from districts or local superintendents took it hard to start a spreadsheet with all the districts in Arkansas to preserve. So I hope the state out there will also be the same, you know, wealth. And I'm happy that we're, we're in board, so people are having dreams to be board. This is not, you know, some number, it looks, again, you know, what we've seen in the past year. And however, it's, it's just a sign of these times.
Without objection, we're, we're complete with the introductory pages. Any objection?
No.
All right. Just for the, for the listening public, Mr. Halleck did submit some questions to Dr. Hill to be answered to the board. Those questions are in front of you. And all nine questions have been answered. And we will make sure that we send a copy electronically to Ms. Taylor and Mr. Halleck in their absence. Is there any discussion about the questions and answers that were provided to us this evening in response to Mr. Halleck? I am hearing and seeing none? All right. I believe we have taken care of our agenda for this evening. With that being said, Ms. Clase?
If I have a question for next week? Can I ask that so that it can be prepared, if possible?
Yes.
Or should I email it?
You should email it to myself and, and Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
Yep. And then I would share it with Mr. Pennos and Mr. Fury to share with their caucus. Would I don't want to share it with everybody, and we started on a legal discussion on email. That I do not want to do. All right? With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Pennos, I mean, motion made by Mr. Fury, second by Mr. Pennos. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All the same abstentions. Motion carries 700. We are done at 8:40. Have a good evening, everyone. I told you I would, Ms. Kalinsky, I told you I would have you out.